You're live, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 7th, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting for the town of Northborough, which I will open now. I have some introductory remarks that are standard to all remote meetings. This open meeting of the Northborough Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with the July 16, 2022 Act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Board of Selectmen are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Northborough Board of Selectmen to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link posted on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. I will introduce everyone here and confirm that you can hear and be heard again. My name is Mitch Cohen. I am the chair. Julianne Hirsch.
Here.
Jason Perrow.
Here.
Scott Rogers.
Here.
Kristin Wickstead.
Here.
And we also have Town Administrator John Kader.
President.
Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins.
President.
And Fire Chief David Parenti, who is running the Zoom of this.
President.
Okay, so this meeting is going to be a little different than most of our meetings. For benefit of anyone who's watching already, we have an executive session scheduled for the start of the meeting. All executive sessions start in public session, which is what we're doing now. So in just a second, I'm going to entertain a motion to go to executive session. And then at about seven o'clock, we will be back in public session. All those viewing the public session will be viewing a very boring bit of text reminding you of that fact. And and then we will see you all then. With that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21, Subsection 3, collective bargaining. Update on negotiations with the dispatchers union. And litigation update on SA Farms. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding these matters in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Second.
Okay, a motion made by Jason, seconded by Julianne. Any discussion? All those in favor, Julianne?
Aye.
Kristin?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
I also vote aye. We are now in executive session, so all of us will be leaving this meeting and we'll see you in the executive session Zoom and we'll see the public in just a moment.
Everybody, the executive session has concluded. We'll come over here, but I think it's good practice for us to wait the extra four minutes. Until seven P M before we formally resume, just in case anyone has their clocks set to those exciting activities. Yeah, so I think the gang's all here, but I'm gonna wait the other two minutes until we hit seven o'clock before we resume. Hey, my clock says seven o'clock. Are we ready to go? All right, welcome everyone to a resumption of the public session of the Board of Selectmen meeting of November seventh, two thousand twenty-two. We did the opening formalities about an hour ago before we went into executive session, and so we don't have to do that again. But I will recognize that we have Police Chief Liver and D P W Director Scott Sharptier. Here in addition to the folks that were introduced an hour ago, so. Welcome everyone, and the first item on our agenda is any public comment, if there is any public comment from anyone in the audience. For items that are particularly not on our agenda, I will entertain that now. Raise your hand in the Zoom. I'll wait a few seconds. If I don't see anybody, we'll continue with the meeting. Going once. Going twice. Alrighty, next up, we have a meeting minutes of the public session of October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Would someone like to make a motion on that set of meeting minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board accept the minutes of October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Jason. Any discussion? All those in favor, Kristen?
Hi.
Julianne?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Jason?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor, approved. Thank you very much. And next up, it being after seven o'clock, we have the continued public hearing to consider an application from G N I I X or nine Forbes Whitney LLC to amend the. Existing above-ground storage license for premises located at thirty Forbes Road by increasing the onsite storage. Of flammable and combustible liquids, flammable gases and flammable solids. We don't need to formally open that hearing. It is continued. And that's what we're doing now, and I assume we have folks from the audience who will be joining us for this item.
Mr. Chair, it's Dave is the one you want to bring in.
Fantastic. Dave, I am promoting you to panelist.
There we go, I'll mute myself, turn on my video here. There should be a couple of us in the audience too from Aspen. George Gould and Rachel Weiskin.
Yep, I see them. I'll bring them in now. Okay, George Gould, I'm bringing you in, and Rachel Westkind, I'm bringing you in.
Do you see a Josh Batullo on there?
I do not.
Okay. Just wanted to check.
Sure. There was one more. Coming in. Well, I promoted, but I don't see. I don't know how that works. Maybe she needs to click something at her end.
Yeah, it gives us like a little invitation to accept.
Hmm, yeah, yeah. So as soon as we do that, it disappears. Okay, here we go. Here's Rachel. Okay, you are muted, Rachel.
I'm sorry, I had a circle going round and round and round. I was like, I'm not sure if this is gonna work or not.
Well, I'm glad you made it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome back, everybody. I know you've. Been through the planning board since we met last. John, why don't you give us a a quick update? Unless you've got anyone else prepared to do that as to where we were last time and where we are now on this?
Uh, yeah, so just by way of setting the table, you originally opened this public hearing back on June twenty-seventh. There were some questions regarding whether or not the special permit modification would be needed through groundwater. Working with council, it was determined that that would be appropriate, so they were sent back to go through the planning board. They appeared before the planning board in on September twentieth, and ultimately that process has concluded. And so they're now back before the Board of Selectmen this evening for the original license. And again, these are concurrent tracks. So one isn't really dependent on the other, but both need to take place. So from the board's perspective, if there is a permit modification that's needed, makes sense to get that done first. Make sure there's no issue or objection there, and now they're back before you with their original request to increase the onsite storage. And so based on the permit modification that was approved by the planning board, the current request for increased of flammable liquid storage. Falls within that and it would be appropriate for the board to take up tonight. So I believe at this stage. You should have all the information that you require to take up this matter this evening, and certainly the folks. That are present at the meeting tonight can answer any questions that the board have that isn't in your rather substantial packet of information already, so.
Thank you very much, members of the board of, do you have any, any questions? Applicants, do you have anything that you would like to say or any questions of us before I I open it up? If I don't know if anyone from the audience wants to say anything, since this is a public hearing.
Oh, I think so.
Okay, this may, this may be quick, we'll see. Members of the audience, this is a public hearing. If you have anything you would like to add or ask, please raise your virtual hands. And I will recognize you. Give it another few seconds. Still not seeing anything, so my assumption is there are no public comments. Before we close the public hearing, any other questions or comments from either the board, Julianne?
So um, thank you for going through this very long process, and I think it's all, we all feel comfortable with the planning board's. Decision, but. If, if the, if Aspen Ara Gels is so, is purchased by another larger company. If they're sold, what, where does this all stand? Do we start from the beginning? Does, do these? Do these contingencies go with, with the selling? How does that work?
Is that for us, or is that for the Board of Selectmen?
Well, for both, for both, for, yeah, for us, I guess. So let's just say a big company comes in and it's. A nice thing for you, you decide to sell. Do you know how, how that process goes in terms of all of these things that we have approved now?
Anyone like to answer that?
Do you? I believe it, the license stays with the, with the property. Right? So if the business were to be sold, the permit modification in this license would, would continue. Those requirements would still be in place. And if they wanted to change that, they'd have to come back to the board, and if they wanted to change it to a degree that went beyond what the. Permit modification was approved by the planning board on September twentieth, they'd have to go back through the planning board as well.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions before we close the public hearing? We did have one or two people join on the public side, so again, if anyone on the public. Would like to comment on this item before we close the public hearing, now's your time, press your virtual hands up button. Not seeing anything, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move we vote to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Scott, seconded by Jason to close the public hearing. Any comments? Uh, Kristen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor. The public hearing is closed. Is there a motion on the application?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the application of G N I I X Forbes Whitney LLC. To amend the existing above-ground storage license for premises located at thirty Forbes Rogue. Road by increasing the onsite storage of flammable liquids from eight hundred eighty gallons to two thousand gallons. Combustible liquids from three hundred eighty gallons to five hundred gallons. Flammable gases from three hundred ninety cubic feet to two thousand cubic feet. With the addition of eleven pounds of flammable solids, all to be stored in specified storage rooms and other approved storage containers.
Second.
Motion's been made by Scott, seconded by Kristen. Any discussion? All those in favor, please vote aye. Kristen?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations. Thank you very much for bearing with us through a very long process for you, and in, in a way, I both apologize and I'm happy that the conclusion of it was so simple. So thank you, and we look forward to hearing about, about all the great things that you're doing at your R and D center.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot. All right, I'm gonna send you all out of, I'm gonna send you all to attendees, and you can disconnect at your leisure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, we have Norm Corbin coming in for the Historic District Commission, a presentation on the Historic Preservation Plan, and Norm, I see you there, and I'm going to. Elevate you to panelist. Oh, Rachel, I still have you in. In here, I thought I sent you. Okay. Mr. Corbin, if you'd like to unmute and turn on your camera, that would be grand.
All right, everything's working.
Hey, Norm.
How you doing?
We're excellent.
Huh?
We're excellent. Thank you. We look, look forward to your presentation.
No, it's not so much a presentation, it's just information.
No, it's not so much a presentation as something, it's just information. How about that?
Okay, sure.
Actually, the, the main reason I wanted to do this is to make sure that it's the formally let the board of select to know and anybody who's watching know that historic preservation plan has been completed. And it's now available on the town's website. If someone were to go to the Historic District Commission website, they can find the full plan. That's, that's the main thing to know that that's done. And now I just give an overview what's in the plan. I won't be taking too much of your time tonight. The plan's based on the master plan from two thousand twenty. And if you remember, the two thousand twenty had a lot of general goals that we would try to address. And the difference between the master plan and the historic preservation plan is we now have identified specific tasks to attain those goals. This is the first historic preservation plan for the town of Northboro. It was prepared by members of the Historic District Commission, but we did have a lot of help from other organizations. So Mass Historic Commission was very helpful in showing us how a plan is supposed to be written and prepared. We also had a lot of input from the Historical Society, Northboro Town Planner, the Planning Board, and the Northboro Conservation Agent for different parts of the report. I can give you an overview of what some of the priorities are, if that, if that is appropriate. All right. So the primary prior, excuse me, the primary priority is education, absolutely. And this goes back to actually some earlier work that the commissions have done in the past. It, it's important to continue to promote an awareness of Northboro's history throughout the community. Such things as historic programs, historic articles, getting them out, getting the people familiar with our history. And to do this properly, we really need to team with a lot of organizations. And absolutely, the most important organization for us is the Historical Society because of their archives and their museum. They are the resource for a lot of our information. Need to also find ways to work with the schools and the library and even cable access, come up with plans to get people affiliated learn more and more about the town's history. So one part is promoting awareness. The other part is actually educating the community. What is the value of historic preservation and restoration? The key part of educating the community is a lot of these efforts for preservation, like the national, putting it on the national registers, local historic districts and preservation restrictions have one requirement. The owner of the property has to have buy-in. So a big part of us increasing our, our efforts for protection, long-term protection really is important at the owners of buying. So that's, that's part of our education process. Some of the topics we're looking at, just in general, as you go through the, if you go through the document, and how do we get more local historic districts and National Register and preservation restrictions in place and working with open space, because a lot of these open spaces are old farmlands or old meadows that were once part of the town's farming history. Some of the things that we have listed as should be looked into with things like preservation of historic documents, repairing and cleaning the old gravestones, especially those at the Howard Street Cemetery. Working with the Trails Committee to open the Aqueduct Bridge for pedestrian traffic. Most people don't realize the entire Aqueduct from the Berlin Line to Marlborough is on the National Register. So there are some ways that we can try to work with the Massachusetts Commission to get maybe some funding for that. Some of our older wall memorials are quite dirty. They would could go for nice cleaning. We want to continue the historic micro program that we've been doing for multiple years now. One of the things that's come up recently is we have never had an archaeological assessment of the town. And there's a lot of potential sites in town that we should really start to recognize what parts of town might have some additional sites. And finding a way to incentivize preservation and restoration to grants and tax credits and things like that. It's for us, for us in terms of the committee Historic District Commission to really understand these things are quite better. Quite more. So if you go through the document, there's a variety of chapters. One of them, it reviews the whole historic preservation in Massachusetts. Another chapter is an overview of Northboro history. There's a view that I found very interesting that we put it together was past efforts for historic preservation in Northboro. There's actually been a lot of past efforts and some of them have been very successful. There's a chapter that has details the current status of the December two thousand twenty-one of all of our preservation properties in town, with the statuses of where everything is in terms of what we've done today, what's been done to date. And finally, chapter six is actually the preservation plan. And then there's an appendix, and the appendix contains any state laws and town bylaws that are related to historic preservation. So we have a a complete package up to date and ready to go for the future. So that was my spiel. And I'm, anybody with questions or comments, we want to happily take them.
Any questions or comments from the board? Jason?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Norm, thank you very much in the commission for having put in all this work and effort to compile the information and produce the report. It really is quite a great deal of information there and encourage everyone to take a look through it. It's very, very educational. Could you comment whether there are any upcoming projects that are going to be brought forward either through community preservation or otherwise for upcoming town meeting?
Um, well, a lot of the projects we tend to focus on are funding for CPA funding. So so I would just put in for some CPA requests really to build up our bank funds, our reserve funds, because we have no money in that yet. Looking, if you look at the preservation plan, you can see the next five years, there could be some pretty good ticket items that we need to prepare for.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Julianne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Norm, one of the things that I think the public might find really interesting is that as we're documenting these historic buildings, we're advised to look at, at structures that are fifty years old, correct?
Yeah, the state would like us to have inventory of any, any properties that are older than fifty years old.
So I mean, we, yeah, I'm a liaison to the Historic District Commission and have not gone to meetings, I'm sorry, recently because of scheduling conflicts. But one of the things we did talk about a long time ago was a neighborhood like Northgate, which fits into that time period and has kind of an interesting history also. But I just wanted to bring that, you know, out publicly and also in chapter seven, you mentioned something called a certified local government. Could you?
Yeah, that's, that's under the things learn, things to learn about title.
Okay.
I, I need to work with the, the town planner to understand that better. I think there's about fifteen and it can, most of these cities that have this fall into this category. I, just sitting here right now, I don't know what the advantage is. I don't understand enough about it. But it was something that the master plan, the, the organization that put the master plan together said that we should look into getting certified government. And I, that's a loose end today.
Okay, and the last thing would be that maybe our, our board agrees that when we meet with our legislators, we can advocate to increase that fine from, I guess it's ten dollars right now, if you start to dismantle an historic stone wall to something a little more reasonable.
Yeah, it's something we should, that there should be some conversation about. Because it's, it's either ten or twenty bucks if you destroy it.
And it's a hallmark of Northboro, I think. But anyway, thank you so much for the report.
No, my, our pleasure putting that together. It was important to get it done.
Okay, again, any, any other questions or comments, Kristen?
Yeah, I just wanted to say it was really interesting, Norm, and I appreciate all the work that all the people involved put into it. It's like a grown-up group project in history class only. It's for the whole town. So it really is well done. Thank you.
Oh, thanks for that.
Okay, anybody have anything else? I, I will add that it's fantastic. I have not read every word of the hundred and sixty or so pages, but there's some, some fantastic information in there. And I will say that for those in the audience that would like to read it for themselves, it is not only in our agenda packet for tonight's meeting, you can also go to the town website, go to boards and committees, Historic District Commission, and it's the very top left item, the Historic Preservation Plan two thousand twenty-two on there. And I, I think it's something that will perform the basis for a lot of future important work. And Norman, your committee, I can't thank you enough. Julianne?
I just have one more question. Um, so Norm, could hard copies of this be put out at the senior center in the library?
Good question. There's a hard copy with the, I delivered a hard copy to the planning department. I delivered a hard copy to the library. I did not think of the senior center. We could have one made there. I actually have one extra copy I could bring there. That's not a problem.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other hands up. Last chance. Oh, we have a hand up from the audience. Laura Zaitin, I'll bring you in as a voice participant to ask a question or comment. Laura, if you could unmute.
Can you hear me?
We do.
Okay, Laura Zaitin seventeen Franklin Circle. I really enjoyed this report and I thank you so much for putting this together. Can you elaborate on what you mean by the reserve fund and the projects that are going to be attributed for that that are part of this plan? And I'm not sure if that was written there. I did go through it and I'm sorry if I missed that, but I was curious what that, what that meant.
The, the reserve fund, this, for those who don't know, it is the CPA funding is a reserve fund. I like to think of it as a checkpoint or a banking account. We put money away for the future. That wasn't really addressed in this plan. This plan really looks at, it doesn't tell us how exactly to get the specific dollars. It tells us what projects we need to do. I think you have a good question, Laura, but I, I think it really is probably something you should ask from the CPC committee in terms of how how they're going to work that. But we do have a requesting for some reserve funding for the next few years.
So do you know offhand which product, projects within that plan are going to be the focus of those reserve funds? And if not, that's fine. I'll go to CPC and follow up with them.
It'll come up when we do the, right now, when we do the, I'm going to have to sit in on a CPC meeting and justify what are what our plans are for the future. And I think that's better, that's a better place to address this, Laura.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for commenting.
Thank you very much. Okay, there being no other questions. Norm, thank you very, very much again. Did you have any, any other closing remarks?
No, it was a good team effort and I'm glad we got this done. And now we can move forward with some clear directions. So I'm happy with that.
Great.
All right, yeah, thanks.
All right, see you later.
Thanks a lot, Norm.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, we have reports. Uh, let's see, Julianne, do you have any reports tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Friday, November eleventh is Veterans Day. And at this time, I'd like to sincerely thank our veterans and their families for the sacrifices they've made for our town and our country. We wouldn't be meeting in this democratic fashion if it weren't for the veterans protecting our way of life. So again, let me just say a very sincere thank you to all of our veterans and their families out there. My next topic is that CPC met last week. They have ten projects that amount to a lot more money than they actually are going to have. And they will start having public, public meetings soon to start going over the projects and then they'll decide what, what they're going to move to town meeting. But as I said at the meeting, I, I, I wonder how our board can communicate with CPC because some of the projects might be suitable for ARPA funding. And I think that as we, as we look towards distributing that money, we, we, it might behoove us to work with CPC also. For example, the, the the trail that is coming before CPC, if they have to wait for town meeting approval, they might miss out on some grants that are available now. Whereas if they got ARPA funding, they could maybe get some, some additional grants. So it's just that kind of timing thing also that we're going to have to work out. I went to the walk-through of the White Cliffs with members of the White Cliffs Committee and the Select Board. And I know, you know, the building looks a little tired from the outside, but it was pretty impressive going inside and seeing those beautiful wood-paneled rooms in the original mansion and how well they, they hold up. So while, and while we were there, we had the pleasure of meeting Sean Thompson, our facilities manager, and he's doing a great job keeping that building up and and addressing the humidity issue. So thank you, Sean, for that. But I have a question that's a little bit in line with this, and I need my board to, to voice their opinion. It's, it seems to me that as we move towards discussing ARPA funding, it would be helpful to know Sean's first impressions of our, of the properties that we own. If there are any projects or problems that he's already addressed, it might, it might change, change some of our decision-making as we distribute that four million dollars. So at, at this time, I don't know if this has, would have to go on the agenda or if we can discuss now whether this is something that other board members would like to, to get. I'm not really sure how to proceed with that, Mr. Chair.
I think, I think if I could interpret what you're saying, Julianne, is that you're asking for some kind of a report from, from John through, through Sean on the condition of buildings and any requested funds or, or recommended actions to be taken place based on the, he's been here about nine months or so, if I remember right.
Yes, and it probably doesn't have to be, you know, a, a PowerPoint presentation or a glossy report. Just, you know, his first impression, something that we we should be thinking about as we, as we distribute the money.
John?
Just by way of context, so Sean is, is one of the departments that reports to me. So anything that he sees in his assessment in terms of what the town needs would come through the budget process as well as the existing capital plan. So if there are, there are facility needs that would materialize, some of which are already in the six-year capital plan, that's where all that information would be, would be found.
And where would we get that then?
It's in the section nine of the budget, which is the, which is the capital improvement plan for six years. So Sean has a seat at the table. And so as he does his assessments for the buildings, anything that's needed in there that can't be supported through the operating budget would be part of the capital improvement plan, which is why, again, just by, by way of reminding the board, why I've stressed, you know, several times that I hope that we look to the plans that the town has had in place for the last six years when we start to talk about how we're going to spend ARPA. Because we've got those assessments and those known projects that are planned out first for the next six years are in, are already been determined and in that plan. Now it's a living document, so it gets updated every year. Sean, as I said, has a seat at the table with Scott Sharptier, the DBW Director, to update all of those projects. And so we're in the process of doing that now. You received the capital manual with, which I sent out about a couple of weeks ago. Again, explains the process and how that all works. But any project that Sean has that he thinks is necessary will show up through the operating budget or the capital improvement plan, or I will make as a request on behalf of the department for, for ARPA funding.
So are you saying that the, that there, he has, as he's been working in the buildings, there's no surprises? Everything is kind of on target with our capital improvement plan?
Yeah, I mean, when it comes to facilities maintenance, there's always surprises. One of the things that I argued for when we funded that position was that I didn't want to be in a reactive mode when it came to building maintenance. We wanted to be proactive. And so making sure that maintenance agreements are in place, making sure that there's economies of scale, in other words, not having each individual department having a plumber, you know, on call or an HVAC vendor. So all that stuff has been centralized and coordinated through Sean. But if there's any projects that need to be done, again, in the operating budget, there is a budget line item in there for ongoing building maintenance that spans all of our municipal buildings. So we have a pot of money in there and, you know, one year we might do a, an HVAC upgrade, another year we might paint a building, another year we might do whatever, whatever is necessary. And so that money moves around. And so Sean's job is on an annual basis to plan out how that operating budget will be used to continue to maintain our buildings. And then, of course, anything that's more significant typically, you know, Uh, more significant typically, you know, uh, well, under the capital budget, anything that is twenty-five thousand dollars or more. And has a useful life of five years or more, uh, would be eligible for in uh, inclusion in the uh, capital improvement plan. So there are many, uh, you know, they're building related projects that fall in there. Uh, and uh, and again, that's something that Sean has uh, gone through and gotten a good handle on. Through the chair, I believe, Scott Sharptier.
Uh, thank you. Uh, that's through the chair. We actually submitted a grant application to the state. To fund a self-evaluation in accordance with the ADA requirements. Um, one of the pieces of that self-evaluation. Is a um, an assessment of all of our buildings for accessibility, uh, both both mobility and other disabilities. And it also includes a a development of a transition plan to address the shortcomings when it comes to assess accessibility. Um, that will produce quite a few projects, I'm I'm thinking. Um, in conjunction with that, we've also been talking about having a professional assessment of building facilities, both structural. Envelope and um, uh, systems in order to get a. A better handle on where some of the larger components are in their useful life. Um, you know, for example, everybody's home has a a water heater. You know, you have a ten-year life expectancy of that. You want to look at it. Nine years in before it breaks. Uh, if you put that on a, you know, larger scale. Um, it's worthwhile to have professionals come in and assess all of our equipment, identify their age, their life expectancy, tag them all. So we have a program of replacement going forward. Um, so those things are in the works. Um, it's not something that um, a department manager, facility manager comes in and gets his hands, his hands around. Um, half a dozen buildings with a lot of different sophisticated systems uh, quickly. So those assessments are are in the works. Hopefully we get some grant money to help us and um, put us in a better position to update capital plan going forward.
One of the other things through the chair that we've done as well is we're working and coordinating more closely with the school department on uh, on their capital needs. Um, school department is very similar to, you know, the library, the senior center. You know, the folks that operate buildings really tend to focus on the services and and uh, their area of expertise isn't necessarily the systems. And the and the physical uh, structure itself. So Scott, Sean have been working closely uh, with the uh, school department. Looking at their roofs, particularly their roofs and some paving projects. Uh, so we're coordinating with them again. Uh, it will, it's gonna take time, but as uh, as this, I mean, ultimately, and this is no, no shock, uh, because I talked with the. Three superintendents ago, ultimately, I would like to have a centralized, you know, facilities department for all municipal buildings, including the schools. Um, there's some logistics to be worked out there, but uh, right now, you know, we need to, you know, get uh. Uh, really focusing on the municipal side, assisting with the schools where we can. But I think there's some economies of scale and some value of that that overall. And at the appropriate time, you know, we'll have that discussion. But I gotta say, so far, Sean has been a breath of fresh air, particularly for, particularly for um, you know, library and senior center. Where staff there isn't uh, really um, uh, does not have the, you know, the expertise of building maintenance. And so coming in and standardizing, making sure maintenance agreements are in place. And just when there's a problem, having somebody to call and go in and. Uh, and uh, and and address it and having uh, existing contracts on call for all of your major trades. You know, heating, plumbing, electrical. So if there's an issue, we know who to call. Uh, we call Sean and then Sean knows who to call. Uh, but that those building maintenance items are getting uh, getting wrapped up pretty good. And then really, as Scott said, just getting a handle on, you know, the. Uh, a longer term plan for investment in our in our buildings. And Sean's done a great job getting a handle on that, but there's still more more work that needs to be done, as you would expect, uh, given, given the limited time that he's spent here, so.
I don't want to spend too much more time on this. This is, sorry, this is just reports. Um, but I I'm also interested in in hearing at some point from Sean. Or uh, from Sean through you, John, um, not just the capital items, but you you mentioned some of them, the maintenance agreements. And some of the other things. This is a new position for the town that we've never had before. Um, I think it makes a lot of sense to have somebody in this position and I agree everything that I've seen and heard about Sean's uh, work has been has been exemplary. Um, but I think it it is, it makes sense, you know, as we approach a year of him on the job, in this year of having someone in this position to have. Um, some information about some of the benefits that we have. Um, and I will say that I'm very, very excited that we're gonna be doing a an ADA review. I I've been through those before. At the municipal level, I think they're very and very informative. They do produce a lot of projects and a lot of work, but it's really important. I I'd ask that maybe we we close discussion on this item now, since it's not formally an agenda item. And I'll ask Julianne, do you have any other items for your report?
That ends my report, but thank you for those great answers.
Thank you very much, Julianne. Uh, Scott, do you have any reports?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to uh, kind of continue, uh, pivot off Julianne on the for Veterans Day. Just want to give a big thanks to. Boroughs Care for Troops, the other organizations that helped help coordinate the participants and spectators. Uh, Sunday for the Veterans Rolling Rowling. That was a lot of fun to uh, go through town and uh, see folks uh, on the side. Uh, looking forward to the Veterans uh, Day Luncheon at the Senior Center on Wednesday. And like Julianne, I I hope everybody takes some time, uh, if you can, on Friday, uh, to think about and uh, support, uh, uh, recognize the veterans in there. And their um, uh, contributions. A quick update from uh, DPW as I was uh, dropping off leaves and grass uh, this weekend. Um, just a reminder that folks need to properly separate brush from the grass uh, and the leaves. Uh, that's critical when the uh, materials are mixed like that. Uh, it takes manual uh, effort to separate and not go through. Very expensive charges for that separation. So folks, uh, if you can continue to put leaves and grass on the left side, brush on the right side. Make, don't mix and match. That'll be a a big, big deal. So Scott, did I do okay on that?
Perfect. You're saving a lot of splinters from our guys when they're uh, loading things up. Thank you, Scott.
Good stuff there. Um, report from groundwater advisory committee. Um, planning boards initiated some discussion with the dissolution. Of that committee. Uh, they don't seem to be considering the impacts to the other boards, committees and commissions that that committee supports. Um, I'll continue to monitor those conversations, uh, and hopefully be able to report back to you that um. Um, that understanding, the importance of the groundwater advisory committee is uh, recognized by the planning board. And uh, we don't have to worry about this issue any longer. Then finally, uh, from the town clerk, uh, just a reminder that uh, in-person voting tomorrow at Melick, Mel- Melick and Middle School. Uh, seven AM to eight PM, uh, just asking that voters uh, continue uh, their respect for the middle school facility. Uh, their fellow residents and the town staff and election workers. Uh, and finally, if you are using a mail-in ballot, please return those mail-in ballots to the drop boxes at town hall. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Scott. Christian, do you have any reports?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the Northborough DPW and Town Engineers Office held hazardous waste removal day. Um, on October twenty-ninth. Um, and I have to admit, this was my first year that I ever showed up. So if you missed it this year, you can go next year. Um, buy a box for ten dollars. At town hall ahead of time, you fill it up with all the things that are on the list and um. It works really well. Um, so you can get rid of the containers of the pesticides that are sitting in your garage. You're not using or the oil-based paints you've been storing in your basement for thirteen years. Um, it was really well organized and well run and uh, good job with that. So thank you to the DPW and Fred Litchfield and their staff. For um, handling that and Fred for answering all my questions about it. Um, the Community Affairs Committee uh, had their jack-o'-lantern stroll and if you didn't have a chance to look. At the jack-o'-lanterns, they were really, really impressive this year. Um, I I had so much fun looking at them. I liked the dragon one and the mushroom pumpkins personally. Um, I don't know who made those. I'm just saying they were really cool. Um, also the commit, uh, Community Affairs Committee. Um, gave me the heads up to announce ahead of time that the um, tree lighting will be. December third this year at four thirty PM. So you might want to stick that in your calendar. Cause that was a great time last year. They always do a nice job with that. Um, so tree lighting and also menorah lighting, right?
Not exactly. So last year.
This year, right?
Yeah, last year they overlapped the tree lighting and holiday of Hanukkah. They don't overlap. What I'm probably gonna do this, what I will do this year. Is I'll I'll have, people are used to seeing the menorah there now, even though it's only been one year. We'll have it out for sort of an informal lighting. It's not, there aren't going to be any, any events and it will just be light bulbs rather than the candles. Uh, and um, we will have a town menorah lighting uh, later in the month. Uh, date to be very, very, very soon during during the holiday of Hanukkah.
Okay, thank you for finishing that for me.
Sure.
Um, so, and the, the Northborough Public Schools are closed tomorrow because of Voting Day. I hope everyone remembers to vote or already has. And my poem, um, tonight is called Stormy. It's by Su and Chan. It's a haiku. Under a clear sky, cerulean seas stand still, hiding storms below. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Jason, do you have any reports?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just wanted to add my thanks to uh, Boroughs Cares for Troops for organizing the Veterans Procession uh, on Sunday. Uh, also, uh, uh, Police Department providing the escort uh, uh, through uh, through town. And uh, additionally, I want to thank the Public Works Department for uh, putting back up the hometown heroes banners uh, along the way. Uh, that was much appreciated. I did take note of that. Um, and of course, uh, I want to thank all the veterans for their service. Veterans Day, uh, unlike Memorial Day where we honor those who have uh, given their lives and service to their country. Veterans Day is the occasion to honor the veterans who are still with us and we certainly want to acknowledge and appreciate their service. Veterans Day is this Friday, November eleventh, and I encourage everyone to uh, uh, to give the appropriate acknowledgement when you encounter a veteran. Uh, that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Um, last is me. Uh, I only have one item that wasn't already mentioned uh, before, which is that the. Uh, annual scouting for food, uh, food pickup event is this coming Saturday, the twelfth of November. If folks want to leave uh, non-perishable goods in recyclable bags or boxes outside your door by nine AM on Saturday, November twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. And the notice says, please no glass or expired food. Um, and uh, I I know the town always uh, steps up for that that event, so I want to give that a call out. That ends my report. Thus concluding of reports. Uh, next item on our on our agenda is to discuss and vote to release ARPA funds for the community meals program. Um, I'm going to bring in Martha McHaleich. To tell us a little bit about this. Martha, I'm bringing you in. You'll probably get an alert on your screen. Martha, if you could unmute and if you'd like, turn on your camera.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Um, so Community Meals has been going on since June of two thousand twenty. When the um, when COVID hit, the community meals that was housed in Trinity Church for like twenty-five years had to be shut down. Um, and after much thought, uh, several of us considered that the, the um. Participants were really sorely missing the fellowship, but they also were really missing the the food. And so Community Meals was designed to um, to help with the food part of the of of the COVID. You know, absence of community meals inside because of COVID. So as of June two thousand twenty, we started to serve community meals. We were funded with the generosity of people in the community. Um, grants were written for from some uh, religious organizations and um, various places that we heard of. That would grant money for food distribution. Um, and so we had been fully funded for a long time. Um, but now obviously the, our money is is running short. We have a, we have a grant from Bay Path, which is now Springwell. Um, for ten thousand dollars that began uh, October first and we get reimbursed for the money spent, but it's it's um. It's for the seniors that come through the our line. It's not for everybody that, you know, we have to estimate how many seniors come through. And we are reimbursed for those those meals that are given by uh, to the seniors. We also have families that come through our line every week. So we started out just for a point of reference, the first week we served community meals, we had. Thirty meals that we served, or thirty-five meals. Quickly, it uh, jumped to seventy meals. And but for the last maybe two years, we have served between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and thirty meals every single week. Um, the meals uh, purchased from uh, generous um, restaurant restaurants in Northborough and and Marlborough. And up until a short time ago, they've been selling us the meals for five dollars, which everybody knows the cost of everything has gone up so much. That some of our vendors are now charging us six dollars a meal or six fifty. Um, so it's between six hundred and seven hundred and twenty dollars per week. Um, I know there's been a lot of concern about us going back inside to conserve, to serve community meals. And that would be most, the most ideal thing. Um, but when we checked with our people um, who had previous volunteered uh, uh. Churches in the area and community service organizations. Um, we did not get a, we did not get a good response. People did not want to come back inside to serve. Um, a lot of our churches and uh, had members that were older that were serving. And they just didn't want to come back inside to serve. And I'm I I'm fearful that. Um, with the uptick of of uh, flu this season and we don't know what the witch is gonna be like for with COVID again. Um, I don't see in the near foreseeable future that we're going to get uh, people to serve back inside Trinity Church. Would it be better for our elderly people to come back inside and have that fellowship? Absolutely. But we also have families that come to our line and I know for sure that the families are not gonna come back, come inside and sit with their kids. To be served a meal. So for now, we're hoping to continue this, this meal. Um, this curbside service um, for the, for as long as we can. Um, and we continue to try to solicit funds from individuals and and if we hear about any grants, we write, write for grants. Um, but that's where we are. Um, and I don't know if I've explained that well enough to you and if you have any questions for me.
Martha, thank you very much. I think you've explained it very well and I I want to commend you on your uh, persistence in reaching out to the board and to me. Um, even when we bump into each other in a parking lot to uh, to make sure that we're aware of this.
After I backed up and huh, and uh, you know, to see you.
The um, I I would love for your program to resume the in-person meals. I I think that's, that's one of the best things. I certainly don't know your um, you know, your people and the churches that offer the facility and the kitchens to be able to do that. So um, when that can resume, um, I I will softly volunteer the Board of Selectmen and uh, perhaps family members. Hopefully we'd be able to uh, to come in as a group and help out and serve some meals. Um, I know I'd be, uh, I'd love to do that. And um, so when, when you're ready, please uh, let us know and I I hope, I hope you're ready soon. Yeah.
Just so you know, we need a consistent eight to ten uh, organizations or churches to be on a rotating basis. Because if you only have two or three that are willing to do it, that it's very hard to get them to come in every third week or every fourth week. We need a consistent commitment of eight to ten churches and organizations to be able to sustain that inside. We can't start it up. The hard part would be to start it up and then say, oh, by the way, we can't do it this week. We don't have any volunteers. Or or, you know, and there's no way to contact the the our clients.
Mm-hmm. No, I can totally appreciate that. You had, you had a great system, a whole machine running for so many years for this. And that that fell apart because of COVID appropriately, so.
And the church, it served at Trinity Church and they have no problem with us coming inside. That's, it's not, it's not Trinity Church that doesn't want us inside. It's the fact that we can't get enough volunteers to do it.
Well, hopefully some people are watching this meeting and um, and and we'll put uh. And we'll go ahead and and be available to you when you're ready.
Thank you.
Great. Um, any other uh, questions or comments from the board? Julianne?
So, um, what, what is the amount of money that would tide you over for a few months? So um, what, what is the amount of money that would tide you over for a few months?
Well, our budget for the year is $37,000. When I figured it out, about 37,000. We do, we are gonna, we, I am gonna submit my first um reimbursement for Bay Path, the, for the, the meals we served in October. But as I said, I haven't figured out the numbers yet. I've got to submit that probably tomorrow, but um, it's only, it's only going to be for our elderly, which I, which I estimate is about 90% of our meals served. Um, so with the $10,000 um that we're going to get, and we are, we, we are, we're known, we're going to get about $1,000 more in donations that we've heard about recently. Um, and if the board were nice enough to give us the money proposed, I believe we could get, probably get through uh a March or April.
So uh, the rest of the board is aware, in, in the email correspondence with Martha, I uh suggested an amount of $12,500, which was in the middle of the $10,000 to $15,000 range, but of course, that's up to the board to decide. Answer your question, Julianne?
Um, yes, and is this where we offer our opinion on how, um, 10? 12, 5, or 15?
You, 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 you can. Uh, Jason has his hand up, so why don't we uh address races?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, Martha, I just wanted to, to double check with you again. Uh, you stated a, an approximate weekly cost of the program. What was that cost again?
If we're paying $6 a meal, it's $720. I think it's $720 for 120 meals. We've been getting 120 meals and serving between 115 and 120 consistently every week.
Um, okay.
I, I, let me make sure that math is correct, um. Yeah, $720 if we, if we serve 100, if we get 120. That's $6.
Okay, thank you.
Approximately $3,000 a month.
My concern was making sure that your program didn't have to close during the winter months. And hopefully, um, you know, that, uh, some, some stability and funding would generate interest in, in the community of providing additional uh donations and everything else. And maybe by the spring, you'd be ready to uh, to resume in person, which has a, you know, a different balance, I think, of, of finances and volunteers.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um.
Julianne?
So at approximately $3,000 a month, um, and say five months to get through the winter, that's $15,000. Um, so I should, I mean, that's what I feel we should, we should give, but I'd like to hear from the rest of you.
Scott?
Yeah, I guess uh one would be from an administrative and, and legal perspective. John, are we restricted in any way on providing funds to a private organization versus through as town services?
No, I spent a good amount of time on Friday afternoon speaking with Vicki Colleen and Jane O'Toole, who is actually the uh uh Helping Hands uh representative. So Helping Hands is the 501, uh, 501 uh C nonprofit, uh 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And under their umbrella is how the Community Meals actually functions. So I spoke with Jane O'Toole, got her information and uh, uh, and also worked with our finance team. And I think that uh probably will work the way it would work the best for us. Uh, logistically, we can work it out. Uh, I don't see a legal hurdle. Uh, we just have to um we just have to make sure that we're, the record keeping is there. So working it as a reimbursement program and we can turn, you know, checks around the same week. Uh, that would be the best for us. But those are details. To answer your basic question of is this a, a legal use of the funding? Yes, ab- absolutely, absolutely. And in full disclosure, you may or may not know, my wife is the coordinator for our church. And so like every Wednesday when it was our turn, there's 25 meatloafs on the counter, dozens of cookies being cooked, none of which I could eat because it was all for community meals. Um, but that fellowship to Mitch's point of, you know, people being able to get together, uh, we consistently had 70 or 80 people every, every week in the, in the program. Um, it'd be great to get back to that. I know people are hesitant to go inside right now. Uh, for what it's worth, I mean, I would prefer nice round figures and um, you know, 12, 12.5 or 15,000 is materially no difference if it gives them a little bit of breathing room. But to go back to your math, Julianne, you know, your 3,000 a month. They do have the $10,000 grant. When you combine that with the funding that's being requested tonight and talking with Jane, uh, at least Jane O'Toole on Friday, felt comfortable that they would uh be able to get through uh into, you know, through the spring and beginning of the, of the uh of the summer. The other thing you mentioned, you know, uh, the restaurants, Acid Bit Valley's culinary program also.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Does it? And um, and they, you know, and they're wonderful because they give the uh, they give the food at cost. Uh, so they're able to do that. So that's another good support. But uh, if the board's so inclined, uh, the 15,000 would be perfectly reasonable uh in this case and, and I'm comfortable after discussions with Jane O'Toole uh and Helping Hands that legally and logistically, we'd be able to make this work uh, work just fine.
One more logistic question, John, then. It's, so then Helping Hands in terms of alignment with town departments, is that then come through um, you know, direct through youth, through youth and family services? Is there, is there any alignment?
Yeah, we'll put, uh, but we need to do what makes uh as streamlined as we can and make, and make sense. And so if it's coming through on a, you know, on a monthly basis or uh even more frequently that I'm comfortable we'll be able to turn around. Whether or not it's the admin and family services that processes the payment, ultimately I'll be the one authorizing it with our, you know, through our finance department. But uh, we can, I'm very confident we can make this work as, as painlessly as possible for everybody involved.
Okay, because my, my, my final questions would be more about um, support and service delivery and that's, and that's what I've been. So that's why I talk about alignment. If we can get the organization aligned with other groups that are uh taking advantage of all the money that is available and grants from the state. Um, you know, I think personally, we're involved with several um food insecurity programs and there is a lot of money, you know, around. And so if there's, if there's personnel in these other organizations, Helping Hands, or even, I don't want to put anything more on town staff, but you know, that are more familiar with the grants that are available, that for the long term and the sustainability of the program, we could get them in, you know, tapped, connected with these other resources uh and, and use the ARPA as merely a, a stopgap for the moment.
I get it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Kristin.
I just, um, I had a question for Martha. Um, so I think you said something about there were some people who you didn't think would join in if you returned to the in-person meals.
Yes.
Well, um, so would you? What would you do if you, if you did return to in-person meals? Would you still offer some meals for pickup or?
Well, I would, yes, if we went inside, well, that would be our hope. That would be our hope. If we went back inside, I don't, you know, the, the families now, you know, with the cost of groceries and the cost of gasoline, the way it's gone up in heating oil this, this uh winter, the families really depend on this one meal a week that, that needed. Um, the elderly and the, the seniors and the families. So I would hope that when we went inside, we would be able to have some to go. That people could just run in or we could have a runner to the cars that, because they pull up in the parking lot at Trinity Church and we just hand them a meal. We have volunteers who supply water and desserts and um that come to help us. We have a sign-up sheet that goes out every six or eight weeks. And the community has been amazing. The community of Northborough has been amazing in volunteering um to provide desserts and also to donate money when they can and, and water. And so the, the community has been awesome. And yes, if we go inside, we are certainly hoping that we might be able to do some to-go meals.
Okay, thank you.
Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, in consideration of uh recent effects of inflation at all, um, and I, I would certainly support bridging this program into the late spring, uh, if not longer. I would be comfortable in, in uh, you know, in an amount up to $15,000 uh, uh, just to provide a little cushion um if necessary and uh, and then perhaps revisit when we kind of get through our process to examine all uh projects that might be under consideration for ARPA funding. Uh, I certainly do support this program. I think the need is well justified. And uh, uh, I believe there is a legitimate urgency here to uh, to ensure that the program is secure over the next several months. Um, I would want to be careful that in taking this action now, we're not setting a precedent or sending a message to other project proponents that they need to artificially elevate the urgency of their requests in order to try to spur quicker action on the part of this board. I think uh, I, I just want to kind of head that off, that uh, I think there's a special consideration here for this particular program, but it shouldn't be taken as a signal that uh, that other uh, other proposed projects should suddenly uh develop uh greater urgency than has already been communicated in their initial submissions. Uh, so as I said, uh, I, I support uh, a $15,000 amount here uh for this program and uh, I hope the board will support it.
Okay. Uh, we have one comment or question from the audience, which I'll take in. Uh, Fran Baxter, I'm allowing you to talk.
This is Fran Baxter, 76 Cedar Hill Road. Um, I happen to be the grant planner at Springwell, formerly known as Bay Path Elder Services. So I had the pleasure of working with the Advisory Council that recommended the authorization of the $10,000 to the Helping Hands for the Northborough Community Meals. I will say that the $15,000 is at a minimum, um, what I would hope that you would consider, especially since it's cost reimbursement and they are already in queue for cost reimbursement with the Older Americans Act funding that was granted through Bay Path. That money is restricted to the over 60 population and anything that we can do as a community to infuse more money with less restriction would benefit. They're not checking ID at the car, but they are required to report the number of unduplicated older adults that they're providing this meal and information and resources to. So I would um strongly request and encourage you to authorize the most you can for cost reimbursement at this point with a review of it in the spring when the need will still exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Uh, any other comments or questions from the board? Or anything uh either John or Martha or anyone would like to add before we consider action? Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to authorize the release of $15,000 in ARPA funds for the Community Meals Program.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Julianne, seconded by Kristin. Any other discussion? Uh, all those in favor? Kristin?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Julianne?
Hi.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you very much, Martha, for bringing this important need to our attention. Really, really do appreciate it.
Thank you so much to all of you.
Sure. We look forward, look forward to, to serving these meals when you're ready.
Good. Thank you.
Great. Thanks a lot. Okay, uh, next on our agenda is to uh approve the Town Administrator's Appointment of Thomas Riordan to the Fire Station Building Committee. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you know, we had one bit uh citizen vacancy still on the committee. Uh, so I'm bringing Tom Riordan uh as the uh appointment that I'd like to make this evening. Uh, Tom, as you know, is a registered architect uh with over 40 years of experience. He's also a licensed building inspector. And he spent uh 20-plus years on the Design Review Committee. He's done over 40 buildings in town. Uh, and he's currently serving on the, he served on the Master Plan Committee, currently serving on the uh White Cliffs Committee and the Historic District Commission as well. Uh, so I was very pleased uh to have Tom in the mix. Uh, he's graciously threw his hat and ring, and I think he'll make uh a perfect addition to rounding out a full committee. So I'm looking for your approval of that appointment this evening.
There are no questions. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Chair. I move the board vote to approve the Town Administrator's Appointment of Tom Riordan to the Fire Station Building Committee.
Second.
Motion made by Scott, seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? Julianne?
I'm just curious, um, John, how, how many applications did you receive?
I think we received about uh 12 to 14 in total. I'll be honest, many of them were uh uh, firefighters or relatives of firefighters or retired firefighters, which makes sense uh because they'd be interested in that uh, in the project very much. And I was looking to get a little bit more uh diversity on the committee, and I was really focused on getting somebody with technical skills, architectural engineering, building, that type. Uh, so um, I did talk to those folks and uh, as you know, we have uh representation on the committee from the Fire Chief and the uh, and a Fire Captain in charge of the facility. So I, I felt like that side of the um perspective was covered. Really wanted to get uh a resident, particularly somebody with some, some appropriate skill sets.
So um, it's, it, so you had 12 applications and we, we really don't know the, you know, the other candidates.
No, it's my, it's, again, it's my appointment. Um, and we appointed three out of those uh folks. The majority of the other ones, as I said, were, we had a number of firefighters who sit, who currently reside in town, several retired firefighters and relatives of firefighters, which uh, again, I appreciate their interest and all things being equal, that would have been fine, but I'm really focused on getting somebody with qualifications. You know, a big piece of this is looking at the program design and the buildability of this uh structure. And so that's why I went with uh, with Tom.
Kristin?
Can you um remind us, John, who the other um people are on the committee?
Sure. Uh, write in the memo in your packet. Uh, Mitch Cohen is the Board's Representative. Uh, John Rappa is the Financial Planning Committee Rep. Uh, we have the Fire Chief, uh Dave Pranty, Fire Captain in charge of facility, in charge of facilities, uh Dan Brillhart. Uh, and then three citizens at large. We have Don Rand, who is the former Chair of the Fire Station Feasibility Study Committee. Uh, Diana Nicholas, who is a, an architect and former Design Review Committee member. And now the last one is uh, last appointment is Tom Riordan. Again, architect, uh, former Design Review Committee member. And he's a licensed uh building inspector as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Motion has been made and seconded. Uh, how do you vote? Uh, Jason?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Kristin?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Thank you very much. Next up on our agenda is to consider an appointment to, as the alternate to the zoning board of Jeffrey Grabowski. Um, either member of the uh Interview Committee want to set this up or John, if you have anything to say?
Uh, no, uh, memo in your packet. Uh, and uh, we just leave it to uh, leave it to the board.
I'll make a comment. Um, when Kristin and I interviewed Mr. Grabowski, he's, he's fairly new to town. Um, a lawyer who has zoning experience and he seems very excited to get involved with um with town committees. It, this seems like a perfect position for him.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I liked him a lot. Um, we had a lot of good candidates for the ZBA and um, you know, at the time, we didn't, we didn't have this role where we could just um appoint somebody to the alternate position if we were sort of promoting um an alternate. So I'm um, I, I was very impressed with his um. You know, it's, it's really important in town to have, I think, um, younger folks and I, I think I remember he lives in an area of town that um is um, there are a lot of old houses and new houses and traffic and like lots of things that um, he's concerned about and he wants to help out with the, all these volunteer jobs in the town. I think it's, it's great for people to step up. I think a lot of times new people don't. or they take a while to volunteer for something. Um, and I really appreciated that he was interested.
Great. No other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Um, Mister Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Jeffrey Grabowski to serve as an alternate member on the zoning board of appeals for a two-year term as recommended by the interview committee.
Second.
Motion been made uh, by Kristen, seconded by Julianne. Jason, you have a question?
Uh, yes, um, unless I'm mistaken, I don't think the interview committee had actually deliberated and made that recommendation in a meeting, in an open meeting. So as phrased, I don't think the motion is technically correct.
Could you clarify, one of you?
That's a good point. We did talk about it during the interview committee, but we weren't sure we were allowed to recommend it. Because this hadn't happened um, in our experience. So I'm not sure we did make it an official recommendation and vote on it. I, I think Jason's right about that, but we definitely didn't talk about it. So we, should we amend the motion?
Yeah, I I would accept a modified motion removing the recommendation portion of that.
Okay. So um.
Okay, and you're in in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay, and Julianne, you're in agreement with that second?
Absolutely.
Okay, and Jason?
Uh, I guess I'd just like to ask how it is this uh, is on our agenda when the interview committee had not in fact met and had not in fact voted a recommendation?
John, any comments?
Uh, no, I wasn't aware that they didn't actually vote. So um, it just came through as a matter of course, so. I wasn't aware of that.
I I would, I I'll, I'll make one suggestion as a way to rectify this is I believe the interview committee is meeting a week from tomorrow to interview candidates for a different committee. Uh, I doubt the agenda has been posted yet. Perhaps the agenda can be added. An item can be included on the agenda to formalize this. And then we'd, we'd be in good shape a little bit backwards. But then the action of the board would be tied to a recommendation. Um, rather than delay this um, in a couple of weeks for another meeting. Anyone have any thoughts as to that process? So it's a cleanup that we have to do.
Sorry.
Jason?
If I understand the suggestion, you're saying that we take action tonight, subject to a confirming recommendation at a future meeting of the interview subcommittee.
You got it. You good with that?
Why not?
Okay. Anybody have any concerns with that?
My concern is the way the process that we've gone through, but for this individual action, we've got to move forward. But um, I don't think you want me to go through my concerns with this overall process and the ZBA appointments. So I'll stay mute on that and we'll get through this action.
Much appreciated. Kristen, you're, you're okay with that?
Yep, I'm okay with that, having um, been through lots of ZBA heartache over the years. I, I think it's best to get it done.
Okay, so I I hear your motion as originally uh, stated. With the added phrasing of um, contingent upon the interview committee's subsequent confirmation. Of that recommendation.
Should I try it again and try?
Yeah, I I think I think a so moved is good.
All those, oh, okay, so moved.
Julianne? You're good with that side? Okay. All right, I think we're in good shape. Um, any other discussion? Jason, I appreciate bringing up that clarification, I do. Uh, let's see, Kristen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Scott?
Abstain.
Jason?
I will vote aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is uh, unanimous with one abstention in favor. Uh, thank you very much. And uh, congratulations, Jeffrey. Next on our agenda is acceptance and execution of the property deed for Ten Monroe. John, tell us about this.
Very exciting. This is the last parcel that we need adjacent to the main parcel where we're going to be constructing a new fire station, a fire station. So uh, we are, closing is scheduled for November tenth. Uh, just today, I got the hazmat assessment of the building. There's nothing outlandish. We know there's uh, an above-ground uh, uh, heating tank that uh, will need to be cleaned up. Uh, but it's above-ground and good condition. And as usual, when you do these assessments, there's some uh, asbestos that would need to be abated before we were to demo the place. But everything's going very smoothly. Uh, I anticipate uh, the closing will take place on November tenth. And in preparation for that, uh, before you this evening, uh, would be your acceptance of the deed. So you would vote to uh, accept the deed uh, for Ten Monroe. Uh, there will be no action on that until town council moves forward with the purchase and sale, assuming everything goes according to plan. Uh, then it will be um, uh, recorded. So uh, but in order to be prepared to have the document ready for the closing on the tenth, I would need you to accept and approve the deed at your meeting this evening.
Any questions? If none, we'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to accept and execute the property deed for Ten Monroe Street. Second.
Motion been made by Jason, seconded by Scott. Any other discussion? Uh, how do you vote, Kristen?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations, John. We have all of the land we need for a fire station.
And a committee.
Yep, and a committee. Very good. And uh, the only other regular item on our agenda tonight is execution of cemetery deeds, one one five seven and one one five eight. Is there a motion?
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to execute cemetery deeds, one one five seven and one one five eight.
Second.
Motion made by Kristen, seconded by Scott. Any other discussion? Uh, how do you vote, Scott?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
And Jason?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Um, John, do we have any other business tonight or anybody?
I did just want to mention, uh, in executive session tonight, uh, the board approved the contract settlement with the dispatcher. So I just wanted to mention that, uh, uh, we did not mention when we came out of executive session. Uh, but uh, we settled for a two-two-two, three-year contract. Uh, a few other language changes that MOA uh, will be up on our website. So under Town Administrator Contract Settlements, I'll post that up there with the other contracts that we've already settled, uh, in case anybody's interested.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Last item on our agenda is always is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to share any information with us this evening? Going once? Going twice? All right, no public comment. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved. I think Julianne beat me to that one.
Yes, is there a second? All right, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen to adjourn. Uh, how do you vote, Kristen?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote unanimous in favor. We are adjourned at eight twenty PM. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.